Good evening. I'd like to call the order, the special meeting for this evening. If you're here for the Old Mystic Fire District trailer controversy, oh, public hearing, they withdrew their application as of today. I think it got emailed yesterday, and we all got notified today. So there will be no Old Mystic Fire District discussion this evening. Seated tonight, we have Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheehan, myself, Ben Filbrick, Gary Belkey, Lynn Conway, and seated as an alternate will be Bennett Brissette. And Andy Meek is our other alternate. Do I have a motion on the minutes? Numbers 1, 7, 3, 1 of July 18th, 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the minutes as written and submitted for number 1, 7, 3, 1 on July 18th, 2023.
Thank you, Ryan. Let's go here, a second.
Second.
Thank you, Chuck. All those in favor?
Aye.
The minutes for 1, 7, 3, 2, July 20th was a recap, virtual meeting of our recap before we did the virtual presentation of the regulation rewrite, and those minutes haven't been submitted yet. Any correspondence?
No.
Sorry? No correspondence. Moving into reports, I'm going to turn it over to Chuck to speak on the SC COG meeting from last week.
Thank you. You're on, Chuck. Thank you, I'm sorry. Still getting my little speech prepared. Yes. I attended the July 24th Regional Planning Commission. It's called SCCOG, Southern Connecticut Council of Governments Meeting. And I'll give you a very brief report, answer any questions that you might have. There were a very good array of contemporary topics at it, and frankly, I was, I had the agenda in advance. And Sam, who was our acting planner in advance at Clifton, is, yes, is one of the prime movers up there, and he sort of helped the chair move through the agenda. But the discussion topics that were, the focus of this meeting were short-term rentals and avenues for regulation. And they did a very good job of going through whether you approach short-term rentals by ordinance or you approach short-term rentals by zoning regulation. You know, we've sort of been down this road before. It's been a painful discussion. They have a white paper that they're putting together that replaces a white paper that's about 10 years old on the same subject that's going to be published in the next week or so. I'm going to get a copy of it, and I'll share it with everybody as soon as I get it. So that topic was, it's amazing. It isn't as much of an issue in some of the other towns as it is, as it is here. And this being, you know, a tourist attraction, you don't have to, you don't have to wonder why. They also talked about legally required commissioner training, the opportunities and the status of various towns. And we rank very well in terms of, you know, our peers. They also were going to offer training in the month of September. And something will be out on it shortly that'll share it with Clifton and probably yourself, Ben. And it looks like it's an interesting opportunity. So if you haven't done it yet, it's a chance to get the training in this year, which is mandated. And it was, it looks like it's, you know, an agenda of very good topics. The last topic that they talked about was legislative update. And there's a bunch of statutes, some that deal with affordable housing that we've talked about here, some that deal with the ZEO becoming the arm of motor vehicle for gas station applications as opposed to the ZBA. But there's a whole array more. They're listed in a series of slides. So what I'm going to do, rather than talk anymore to protract this meeting, is those are the three subject areas. They have a very good set of slides. I'll share the slides with Clifton. He can share them with everybody else. And I urge you to look closely at them, in particular, the legislation. The legislation is, brings you right up to date quickly. That's it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Clifton.
Chuck, can I just ask you, the training that is proposed for September will be taped and available?
It's probably, you know, my guess is it's probably going to be at their location. But, but that's not necessarily laid in stone. So, but the agenda looked really good in terms of a lot of the things that are contemporary subjects for, for us. So I've already done one training class, but I think I'm going to do this one anyway just to get ahead of the game. And it looks like, it looks like it's going to be a very good session. And, and they're really into it. So I think we'll get a lot out of it.
Great, thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Any other questions, Chuck? Okay. Clifton?
Sorry, trying to do three things at once now. We need another arm. So first, on the administrative review items is PZ 2235 subdivision and CAM, Old Stone Ridge LLC. The applicant is requesting a 90-day extension to file the final Mylar plans for the subdivision that was approved at the April 18th, 2023 meeting. Basically, they're working on resolving the final language for the conservation easement that the commission approved the modification to the stipulations at its June 6th meeting. And that's basically all that's requested at this time.
Any other questions for Clifton on this? Go hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the application as submitted.
Thank you, Ryan.
Second.
Thank you, Chuck. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, I guess moving right along, any other correspondence, Clifton, or right to a public hearing?
No other correspondence. Old business, we're skipping over, so straight into the public hearing.
All right.
Pursuant to general statutes of the state of Connecticut revision of 1958 and all amendments thereto, and pursuant to the zoning regulations of the town of Stonington, Connecticut, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice that it will hold a public hearing at the Stonington Board of Education District Office, 40 Field Street, Pawtucket, Connecticut, on Tuesday, August 1st, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. on the following application, which we will open now, PZ 2314 SUP, Janette LLC, special use permit, application to permit construction of a one-story 3,300 square foot convenience store with three fuel filling stations with a canopy. Proposal includes parking, repraving, stormwater drainage, and associated site work. Property located at 54 South Broad Street, Pawtucket, assessors map 14, block 2, lot 6, zone LS-5.
Thank you, Lynn. So seated this evening, same as earlier, we have Ryan Deasy, Chuck Sheehan, myself, Ben Filbrick, Gary Belkey, and Lynn Conway, with Bennett Brissette as the alternate sitting in. Process will be, there's a sign-up sheet by the door, so please feel free to sign in for general comments or for or against the application. We'll hear from the applicant. We'll then open it up for the public for their input. We'll have questions along the way from the board commission. There'll be a rebuttal if necessary. Staff input and further board questions. This meeting will be continued because some new information came in under the deadline. So this, we will continue this hearing, and new information will be presented at the next hearing, and we'll start the process all over again, not all over again, but continue the process. Yes, Lynn?
Because we know it's going to be continued, do we have the data the next meeting? It's just that I will be away?
It's August 15th.
August 15th?
Oh, okay, thank you.
Just on that, Mr. Chairman, I would ask, I'm going to be away that week. I would ask that it be put over to your September 5th meeting?
Just file an extension request with us.
Okay.
If that, if that extends over the...
I don't think it'll extend over, it won't extend over the public hearing.
Thirty-five days.
Thirty-five days?
Yeah. My math is it might be right on that date, so just, just in case, we'll talk...
Yeah, because we're so early today.
Yeah, we'll talk offline on it.
Mr. Chairman, I will be away for the September 5th meeting.
Okay. Well, then that's why we'll have Bennett sitting in. That's right? Okay. All right. Thank you, Lynn. All those.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And sorry, I should have started by saying, my name is John Casey. I'm a partner with the law firm of Robinson &amp; Cole, and we represent the applicant, Janette LLC, in this application. We're here tonight, it's a proposed convenience store and gasoline service station at the site of a former gasoline service station. So we are reestablishing a pre-existing non-conforming use. There was an application a year ago, you may recall, PZ 2211 SUP, that had to be withdrawn because there were some changes to the design that had to be made. Since that time, we've got a new wetlands approval that was granted on May 4th to, that encompasses all the design changes that impacted the wetlands. And tonight with me is Kyle Halbert from CLA Engineers. He'll present the proposal to you. Also with me in the back, representative of the applicant, is Ahmed Chowdhury, one of the principals. As a housekeeping matter, I'll start, I have the certified mail receipts, and I have four of the green cards that were returned. The rest of them did not. And as we discussed earlier, did I do that? As we discussed earlier, this is going to have to be continued. So we'll make a, you know, we'll, we'll give you our presentation, but in order not to repeat ourselves when we come back, maybe I'll save a little of my sort of summation for when we're back here again. So I'll touch on a few things, but I don't want to just do, do it twice. So, okay. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Kyle, who will present the site plan to you.
My name is Kyle Halbert. I'm from CLA Engineers. We're located in Norwich, Connecticut. I'm a professional engineer, registered here in Connecticut. As John mentioned, we're here for a proposed special use permit for a retail convenience store and gasoline service station at 54 South Broad Street. That's Route 1 in Pawtucket. The current property is about 0.8 acres. It's zoned LS-5. It's local shopping. And as John mentioned, it's a site of a former gasoline station. The proposed development, actually, before that, I can show you. That is the current building and current site at 54 South Broad Street. The proposed, the proposed development is for a 3,300 square foot convenience store. There will be three fuel pumps, fuel islands, located between the building and the Route 1 frontage. The fuel pumps will have a 76-foot by 24-foot canopy over them, and the fuel islands will be on a concrete pad typical of, of gas stations. There's also the associated parking for the development, primarily in front of the building, also some parallel parking spots in the, by Route 1, on the frontage. This proposal, as John mentioned, is very similar to what you guys had seen last fall that was withdrawn before the commission took any action on it last, last summer, rather, I'm sorry. As part of the proposed development, the existing building that's located more or less in this area right here will be demolished. The proposed building, as I said, will be set back a little further on the site behind where the existing building currently lies. The parking and fuel pumps again will be along the frontage on Route 1. There'll be two 15,000-gallon fuel tanks that'll be stored underground. They are located between the building and the fuel islands right here. Above those tanks is a concrete pad that'll be on the surface. The proposed building and the project conform to the zone's bulk requirements. It also conforms to the parking requirements. Seventeen parking spaces are required, and 17 parking spaces are proposed on the lot. The proposed hours of operation for the facility are 6:00 a.m. to midnight as part of their operations. I can kind of walk you through the site access and layout. The site directly accesses Route 1. We're proposing a single entrance to the west right here. This will be a right turn in only to the property, and there will be a single exit to the east over here. This will be a right turn out only. We have worked with DOT and the traffic engineer on the entrance and exits, and that's why we've provided the right turn in and right turn out only for the, for the facility. DOT has performed an initial review of the site and the work in their right, in their right-of-way. They've provided some initial comments. We've addressed those comments, but their final review is still pending. Traffic impact analysis was performed. It concluded that the development will not have a significant impact on the traffic on Route 1. The site is accessible by a tractor-trailer delivery truck, a fuel tank truck. That's a WB-50 truck with a 40-foot trailer on the end. There is a vehicle maneuvering plan included on the site plans that shows a demonstration of the truck entering and exiting the site. The sightlines for the site meet the requirements of DOT, and that's demonstrated on, on the plans as well. There is also a loading space that meets the zoning requirements to the western side of the parking area right here. Fuel deliveries will take place over the concrete pad that's located over the, the fuel tanks, and they will be done off-hours, so there won't be business operations when, when fuel is delivered. A dumpster pad is located to the east of the building right here. That will be surrounded by a solid PVC fence to screen the dumpster, and the swing gates will be PVC as well, solid PVC. We've also included a bicycle rack at the front sidewalk as, as well for access to the, to the site. As you're probably aware, there is currently a sidewalk construction project going along Route 1. It will cross in front of this site. This development will have to modify that sidewalk that will be installed. Will meet the same ADA ramps and will conform to all the regulations and DOT's requirements for that, for that sidewalk. But based on the timing of when construction will occur, that sidewalk will already be installed out there. So this, this site will modify that to accommodate it. The convenience store will connect to the municipal water system. It'll also connect to the sewer system. There are current sewer and water connections now for the existing building that will be reused. A landscaping plan has been provided as part of the plan, plan set. There are trees spotted throughout the site. There are perennials spotted along through the site as well. They've also provided evergreen plantings along the west and east property line to provide screening to the neighboring properties. Stormwater on the site will primarily sheet flow across the parking lot from east to west, matching the current drainage patterns. It'll be collected in catch basins and a trench drain that'll be located at the, at the driveway entrance. Stormwater will be cleansed through a storm scepter, a hydrodynamic separator that will function as pretreatment and will remove sediments, floatable debris, as well as free oils from the stormwater. The storm scepter then discharges to a water quality basin located to the west of the proposed building right here, this darker green shade right here. Roof runoff from the building will also discharge to the water quality basin as well. The water quality basin has been sized to store the volume of stormwater for the water quality storm. Discharge from the water quality basin will be via a level spreader towards the rear of the site where it will overland flow to the rear of the site. The proposed project reduces the peak stormwater flow rates and also stormwater volume from the site for the 2 through the 100-year storm. The project also meets the water quality goals of the DEP Stormwater Quality Manual and the town's MS4 requirements. The construction on the site will disturb roughly six-tenths of an acre. We've proposed erosion and sedimentation controls that include silt fence along the southern limits of construction that'll delineate the limits of construction for the project. We've also proposed silt sacks to be installed in the catch basins at the time of construction. There will also be hay bale barriers installed around all the stockpiles on the site, and we've proposed a crushed stone anti-tracking pad at the driveway exit. Dewatering, the dewatering plan also is included as part of the ENS plan. That includes groundwater testing prior to any site dewatering and for an assessment and observation by a licensed environmental professional prior to starting dewatering activities. Licensed environmental professional will also observe any excavations on the site if there are any potential for contaminated materials there. As we had gone through with the Inland Wetlands Commission, they had requested an additional monitoring well be installed on the site. Sorry about that. That will be located in the parking lot in the front of the building right here. As part of that, the applicant will monitor the groundwater for volatile organic compounds, VOCs, semi-volatile organic compounds, and extractable totalable petroleum hydrocarbons. These test results will be done, they'll be sampled yearly. The test results will be reviewed by the licensed environmental professional, and the results will be submitted to the town staff for their review as an ongoing measure at the site. Within the plan set and as well as within the stormwater management report, we've included operations and maintenance measures for the site, for maintenance of the stormwater structures, maintenance of the water quality basin, sweeping requirements for the parking lot, and, and cleaning of any of the stormwater structures out there. Lastly, I can, I can discuss the building quickly. This is the proposed front elevation of the building. It's the same as was proposed last summer. And here is a rendering of the front elevation and front fuel islands for the site. The HVAC equipment will be roof-mounted on the rear of the building, so it won't be visible. There will be some refrigeration equipment that will be pad-mounted at the rear of the building as well, but none of that will be visible from, from the street. And with that, I can pass it back to John.
Just while you're there, could you just mention, one of the reasons we, we didn't get everything in before, we didn't get everything in before 15 days is there were some comments from the town engineer. Can you just explain to the commission what those comments were, how you reacted to them, and what you, your understanding of his response to your response?
Absolutely, yep. The town engineer did, as John said, provide some comments on, on our original submittal. One of the things he commented on was additional ADA sidewalk ramps at the Route 1 intersections that we provided. He also requested a modification to one of the turning radii at the exit driveway. We made those revisions to the plan. He also asked for a little additional information on the stormwater report as opposed to a graph that I provided. He wanted some data as well. He did review that. We resubmitted that information to him. He did review it, and we did hear word from him today that he has reviewed and approved those plans and calculations.
Would it be okay to ask a few questions now?
Yes, yeah, absolutely.
Anybody have questions?
Do, Mr. Chairman. So we don't have access to like the hydraulics reports and stuff that were done, and I'm sure you submitted for the water quality basin?
Yes.
I'm assuming it's a detention basin in addition to water quality basin?
Correct, correct. It mitigates the...
Could you just explain to us the design of storm and the frequency of how often you anticipate the spillway to be used and where the water goes when it goes over the spillway, how the site is graded in that area, and how it's contained on site?
The spillway will see flow in, in the two-year storm, so that, that will, that will happen, and you know, discharge will happen in the two-year event. That discharge, if I can get back to that one here, will run southerly to the rear of the site, behind where the proposed building is. It'll run over land. It'll first discharge through a RBRAP level spreader that will spread out the flow. It'll then run over land and then to a wetlands system that, that is located to the rear of, rear half of this property.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I don't have any other questions at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Ryan Deasy, I did see you submitted a site lighting plan. Could you walk us a little through that, the lighting plan on that, please?
I can, yes. I, let me, I, we have proposed, it's all LED lighting. It's all down-firing shielded lighting. There are, there will be 12 lights under the canopies that'll be flush-mounted, firing directly down at the surface underneath. And then there will be five light standards spotted around the parking lot that will shed light on the parking area. The photometrics plan shows basically no spillage over the property line to the neighboring properties. There is some that goes onto the DOT right-of-way slightly into the shoulder of their road. But it's all LED lighting, night skies compliant, and meets all the zoning requirements for the lighting.
Okay. And another, just curious, I noticed on your drawing, it looked like there was a sign out front. Would that be lit?
Um, I believe that's the existing sign that is out there. I don't recall if it is backlit or not.
Okay. But you would be obviously updating that sign and...
Yes, to, to the current operations, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, a couple, couple questions. The canopy that are, that's over the tanks, is that going to be lit, the top of the canopy as if it's a ring around the canopy?
That is not proposed, no.
Okay, so I'd like that to be a stipulation if we get that far. Also, can you tell me, and I might have missed this in your, in your presentation, are you planning to look at the current contamination in the soil given that in some previous years it was a gas station before you do any kind of construction?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry, I must have missed that.
Nope, nope. Yeah, those swords mixed in there, yep. The old tanks were removed from the site and legally removed, and, and the removal met all the requirements for DEP.
Okay.
As part of this excavation, there will be a licensed environmental professional that will review both dewatering, if it's needed for the tank installation or footings, as, as well as the estabated material as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, I just had a little bit of a question about how you guys arrived with DOT. Yeah, I just had a little bit of a question about how you guys arrived with DOT at the right turn only entrance and right turn only exit, and how that will be, I don't know if enforced is the right word, but indicated.
The right turn exit was a concern of the police commission, acting as a traffic authority. They had a concern with the sightline looking over, looking towards the shopping center and the traffic light to the east of this development. So that was a concern that we addressed through them. DOT had a concern that people trying to, traveling east to west and trying to turn left into the site, the traffic, the traffic count indicated that a potential for a bypass lane would be required and expand Route 1 in that area to allow bypass. To alleviate that concern, DOT was okay with us doing a right entrance in only. There will be signage placed in the DOT right-of-way that indicates no left turn is allowed, and also the skew of that driveway entrance will discourage people from trying to turn left into the site.
That's actually my area of interest. So will it discourage, or will it be almost impossible to enter from that turn?
If somebody wants to hop the curb, they could try that.
They will.
But yes, it discourages that people trying to make that left turn.
But it wouldn't end up if a person stuck perpendicular in the road realizing they can't get in?
No, no, no.
Okay, that's it.
Do you know the square footage of the existing building there by chance?
Top of my head, I do not. I want to say it's around 24, 2,500 square feet. I don't recall exactly, but I can get that info.
I'm just curious, when you designed where the pumps are going to go, the majority of cars, I'm assuming, have the gas on the right-hand side or left-hand side? Does that factor in when you do that, like for your internal traffic?
It does not, because I assume cars are split 50/50 on what side the gas tank is on, so people will know how to get, and how to circle through the site to get to the gas tank.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I do have two more questions that I just want to bring up. So you said it, you designed for a two-year storm, so that every two years, the expectation is that there will be some kind of storm that would run into wetlands. Is that correct?
We designed for the two through the 100-year storm, so it's through all those storm events that we run the analysis that shows that the peak flow and volume from the site are reduced compared to what existing, what currently goes to the wetlands behind the site.
Okay, so I misunderstood you when you said I would assume that every two years you would have a wetland.
There will be outflow from the basin in the two-year storm, which, yes, there will be outflow from that basin, but there's currently storm water going to those wetlands now. We're just reducing the peak and the volume and
Okay. And then, I know that this site, years ago, was a gas station, and it was changed over to various businesses. Do you have the dates of that?
I don't. Do you have the record of that done? I don't.
When it's my turn again, I can speak to that.
I didn't hear your, I'm sorry, I didn't hear your answer, Mike.
I said, I was going to speak to that when I got, when Kyle was on.
Oh, okay, oh, perfect.
If that's okay.
Yeah, I didn't hear you. Thank you.
Thank you. Very good, thank you.
It's new.
So, again, for the record, John Casey. So, to the question about the prior use of the site, I know this was an issue last year. So what I just handed you, so as not to recreate the wheel, was a letter that a former counsel for the applicant submitted with attachments. It's not all relevant, still relevant to the application, but it has information concerning the prior use, the intent of a prior owner to reestablish the gas station, and some case law regarding pre-existing non-conforming uses and the right to continue those uses unless there is specific evidence of abandonment when it comes to the use. And so, and this comes into play, and then I've also included a letter that Jeff Landrigan wrote last year on the non-conforming use issue. So I wanted to make sure those were in the record. And these come into play because there's a provision in your regulations 2.11.2, about 1,500-foot separation distance between gas stations, and there's a gas station two doors down. And it's our position that this gas station is a pre-existing non-conforming use. It hasn't been abandoned, therefore, we don't need to meet the 1,500-foot separation distance. So that's why we wanted to put that information in the record for you. And basically, as to the dates, and it's in the letter from Attorney Cole, and supported by a transcript from 1963, but basically, your zoning regulations were passed in 1961. In 1963, the prior owner, the Hendels, came in for a permit to, a certificate of location approval. In that transcript, there's evidence that the gas station use was established 10 years prior, so that would be in 1953, 54 timeframe. And at that time, they were going to the ZBA to get a repair's license, and so you needed the certificate of location for the repair's license. And I actually think they did a little automobile dealing too at the time. But, so they were before the board back then, it was granted to them. So there's evidence before you that the use as a gas station predated zoning, therefore, it's pre-existing non-conforming use. It was kept going. The tanks were eventually removed. I should know better, I need to bring my readers. Like a lot of tanks, these had to be removed in 2016 because of their 30-year life cycle was up. At that time, Hendels had, I believe, they were sort of in between as to what they wanted to do with the property, so they had to remove the tanks, they rented it to a roofing company, roofing company leased it for a few years, they then sold it to Petroleum Marketing Group, and there's an affidavit from last year from their vice president of assets saying that when they purchased it, they intended to reestablish the gas station use at that time, and then they eventually sold it to the current applicant.
So at the time that Hendel owned the property, and then they rented it?
Yes.
Then they sold it. So Hendel had no intention of continuing the use as a gas station because they rented it, and then they sold it, correct? And the last thing they did was a roofing company?
That's a bit, we don't have evidence of that. It's speculation. We don't know, we know Hendel sold it. That's what we know. Those are the facts we know to someone who intended to use it as a gas station.
But we know the fact that they did not use it as a gas station, they rented it, and the last thing they did with the property was rent it as a roofing company.
As an office.
Yep.
Correct.
Thank you.
But that in and of itself isn't intent to abandon, and neither is, there's a case from the appellate court that said the removal of fuel storage tanks in and of itself is not an intent to abandon, because those were required. If we remember, a lot of gas stations either closed or were digging up their property those years because everything from the 80s had to be, you know, all those gases, all those underground storage tanks had to be replaced at that time. So, well, you could read the letter from your attorney, who supports our argument that it's a pre-existing non-conforming use that was not abandoned. Case law is pretty clear that there has to be specific evidence of abandonment, and I don't think you can just rely on speculation or what you assume someone was thinking based on whether they rented it to a roofing company or sold it to another gas company in and of itself.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yep.
So just reading the language about abandonment, you know, I noticed that it says, and, and, let me find it here, "an intention on the part of the owner to relinquish permanently a non-conforming use." So just so we don't have to talk about this all night, do you have any examples of times when an owner has intentionally relinquished a use, and what that looks like in comparison to this situation?
It's typically accompanied by a physical change to the property. So if you had a gas station and you tore it down and tore out the tanks and built a McDonald's?
Okay.
Something, a physical manifestation.
So something that physically removes completely, we're not just talking about tanks that are required to be removed, something that completely removes the existing use?
And the ability to reestablish.
Or a letter saying, "I don't intend to ever use this"?
I suppose you could, yes, you could. There was, there was a case, actually, the case where the appellate court said the evidence of tank removal in and of itself is not enough.
And that's understandable with gas tanks.
But in that case, a prior owner had, I forget if it was a letter or an affidavit or said something like, "I never intended to reuse this as a gas station," like decades earlier than the time a later owner said, "I want to use it as a gas station." And the court in that case, with that very specific information, said, "For us, that's intent of abandonment." But other times, the famous one is, I forget what town, it might have been East Lines, like old hotel case, where someone just let a hotel, you know, they closed it, it kind of went to seed, but, and no one used it as a hotel, no one used it as anything, and then decades later, someone came back and said, "Oh, I want to make this into a hotel again." By then, everything had been rezoned, it wasn't an authorized use, but the court said, "No, there was no intent to abandon." And the statute itself, you know, which controls all zoning, you know, says the demolition or decommission of a non-conforming use, building, or structure shall not by itself be evidence of such property owner's intent to not reestablish such use, building, or structure. So the statute sets a pretty high bar, so there's no such evidence here. And as I said, when the prior owner bought it before they sold it to the current applicant, they intended to reestablish the use as well.
So the only, the only occurrence that could be construed as an attempt to abandon here is the gas tank removal, and that is explicitly accepted by case law?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So that's, so, so moving on from that, I'll just quickly sort of touch on the zoning regulations that would apply here. Obviously, we wouldn't be here if gas stations weren't of special permit use, that's in Section 336 of your zoning regulations, there is special permit use in the LS5. Just to be clear on one aspect of gasoline permitting, gasoline station permitting, and it was mentioned earlier, so your regulation says, see Section 810.5, ZBA review. So we have in our statutes, although now they've been updated in one aspect, where DOT requires the local authority, in quotes, to say that the use, whether it's a gas station or a dealer or repairer, using kind of antiquated language in my opinion still, they have to, you have to go, if you're going to go to DOT for a permit, you've got to come with your certificate of approval from the local authority. They just amended the statute as to dealers and repairers to say that the ZEO is the local authority. So this kind of old-fashioned way of having to go to the ZBA to get this special certificate of authority is now gone. You just, the ZEO just has to say, "It's an authorized use." And typically, in a situation like this, for a repairer or a dealer, you're going to need a special permit. So you've already gone to zoning commission, and the ZEO can then just let DOT know that the certificate of approval has been granted. There's a different statute that applies to gasoline stations, and that says that certificate of approval shall be obtained from, it's either the zoning commission, planning and zoning commission, or local authority of the town. So I don't want to speak for your planner, but we had a back and forth about this, because I said, "Well, what do we need to do, you know, to get that approval?" And that's under Section 14321 of the statutes. And it was determined that if we obtain this special permit, that would be the certificate of approval that we would need to then go to DOT to get their permit to be a gas station. So, so I just wanted to, it's a bit of a rabbit hole, but I just wanted to explain that. I think for purposes of this commission, you need to focus on the application we have before you, and then we'll take that to DOT and get whatever permits we need from them. But there's no other permitting process in town? There's no permit application that says certificate of approval for a gas station? So since this, this will serve as that function. Okay. So then, moving on to your other regulations that apply, Section 211 has some specific rules about gasoline sale places. 11.2.2111 says, "No gasoline filling appliance shall be located within 25 feet of a street line or 50 feet from a side or rear lot line." That, we comply with that. And the second one is the 1,500-foot radius that I mentioned before, which we propose is not applicable here because of the non-conforming use. And then, like I said, I'll just touch on these, but we'll be back, so I'll go over them in more detail in the future, the next time we get together. The special use permit standards are in Section 6.4. I think we meet all of those, which include that it's adequately served by sufficient water supply and sanitary facilities, the public's fully protected by fire safety and security equipment, transportation, that's, there's no undue traffic generation that will result from this. It will not create, at any point, any dangerous or objectionable elements, no adverse effect on the character of the district, property values, historic features. As I said, we're just reestablishing a pre-existing use. No impact on irretrievable environmental resources. We've been to wetlands, all those issues with the storm water management have been fully vetted by them. We will, they determine that we comply with the regulations and we have our wetland approval. determined that we comply with the regulations and we have our wetland approval. And we will go and get all our applicable state and federal requirements when we're done. Consistency with the plan of conservation and development, I went through that. There's not too much, there's a lot, as you know, that focus, and I know you're going through it again. There's a lot that focus on Parketuck Village proper, and we're sort of a little bit outside the village, but there's still policies in there to address village business needs. And 8.3.2 is to encourage investment in commercial properties. I think this is a good investment for the town in a commercial property that's now underused. While not directly from this development, there is a policy to develop sidewalks between downtown Parketuck and the high school. Part of our proposal is to make whatever changes we need to, to have those sidewalks developed. Other ones, the other policies mainly are about commercial development, 10.1 to increase commercial tax base, 10.2 to guide business development. Parketuck is what's called an opportunity area. 10.2.1 specifically encourages the reuse of underutilized commercial sites. We think this is an underutilized site, and it'll be a great improvement for that stretch. And 10.3 is to retain and support and encourage business development, which we think this will do. And just lastly, there's a number of considerations in Section 6.5, special, you know, conditions and whatnot you can add. I think a number of those, we've already proposed a number of elements to this site plan that meet those in turn, including screening and the design of buildings and time of operations and things like that. So, we think the proposal kind of meets all those criteria in your special permit regulations. Of course, open to any additional conditions to, you know, clarify those. But we think this has been designed in a very sensitive way, very sensitive to the wetlands. As Kyle said, it's a net improvement over the existing site. The wetlands now have seen it twice because we went, they had to go through last year, and then when the building had to be shrunk and shifted five feet to the east, that kind of changed everything. New engineering firm kind of took a look at it, you know, made some little changes, not major changes. But I think the takeaway is, you know, the site is overall going to benefit those wetlands. It'll, the stormwater will be much better shape than it is now where it just sheet flows into the wetlands. So, I'll stop there because I know we'll be back. Again, I would ask that this be continued to the September 5th, if at all possible, and happy to answer any questions.
Stand by, please.
Yep.
Thank you. Carleen, would you like to have some words?
For the record, my name is Carleen Donnarumo, and I am going to make four requests tonight, some that apply to you and some that apply to the applicant. Technically speaking, by regulations, I am an abutter. My husband and I own the property across the street from this gas station proposal. However, you would never know that by looking at the information that I was looking at in the record. What I spent some time looking at was the latest submission that had additions and corrections on some of the sheets. But nowhere, anywhere was there in that set, and it may be somewhere else in the record. It was voluminous, as you may suspect. And I just did not have the time to go look through everything that was in the file. But it seems to me that every time you, as a commission, get an application in, and there's a meets and bounds, the adjoining or abutting property owners are always listed on it. And I think this is lacking if it's not somewhere else in the report. So, I'm going to request of the applicant and you that that information be part of the record, that there is a site plan that shows existing conditions, which there is, and it shows beats and bounds, but it does not show abutting property owners in the set that I looked at, the newest one. So, that's request number one. The other thing, and the reason why I was looking at these plans and concerned about what was going to be there, had to do with drainage. I would like the applicant engineer from CLA to testify on the record that any water coming off that property is not going to affect my property. He said that the water was flowing from east to west, and we're on the, let's see, the north side, north-south, east-west. But I would like that stated on the record. Maybe Mr. Casey can cajole his engineer to say that. That's request number two. The plan set that I looked at, that new plan set, did not have any building renderings on it. They showed one picture tonight, and it looks like from the planner's report that it did not go before the architectural review board. And it would seem to me, in our town, that we should be very concerned about any commercial building that is planned for our town, and that this should have gone before the architectural review board. And since it's going to go for another month, I would think they would have some time to go through that. And I would request that you request that the architectural review board look at it. Maybe they'll agree with everything that's there, maybe they'll have some good suggestions. But they did not review it, and it is commercial. And the last thing I want to comment on is the sheet number four on the plan of set, the plan set, which had to do with the turning radii of vehicles. And it was depicted as for the fuel tanks. And it's showing coming in from the right-hand side, if you're looking at the building, and then go, you know, how they've talked about the entrance and exit. I'm wondering if the fuel tanks, the fuel trucks, rather, always come from the west? What happens if they're coming from the east? Are they going to be able to make that turn into the property? And I wasn't quite sure when they were talking about it. If I'm driving from downtown Parketuck, I can't go into that entrance? Is that correct? So, how are they going to get customers from downtown Parketuck? What are they going to do? Drive to the house, high school, turn around and come back? It doesn't make any sense. I don't know. I think this should be looked at a little bit better. Or maybe, do the fuel tank, fuel trucks always come from the west? Maybe they're going to come from the east? Maybe they got to go to Providence to get the stuff? How are they going to get in? I don't know. I think you should have someone talk about that. So, that would be my fourth request. And since I said that since this is going on, maybe these things can be resolved before the next hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Carleen. I did check with Gail yesterday, and she seemed to think it has gone before the architectural review board in February. But we will double check.
Yeah, because the plan that I looked at and the planner's report didn't, I had no way of knowing.
Thank you. Charles Caldwell.
Good evening. My name is Charles Caldwell. I live at 50 South Broad Street, Parketuck, Connecticut, next door to this proposed gas station slash convenience store. When I moved in, purchased that house in 2006, there was a single pump at that gas station. There were two garage bays. It's like a mom-and-pop gas station where they would like work on cars, fix tires, that sort of stuff. That gas station was sold, or went out of business probably 2008, 2009, and it was vacant. When people asked where I lived, I'd say, "I'm next to the abandoned gas station." So, whether or not it's abandoned or not, I'm not sure. It looked abandoned to me. Then I guess it was sold a couple times to a couple different companies. And now, it looks like they're trying to propose a convenience store, much bigger than what was there before. It appears to be pushed way back, almost into the wetlands, which I'm very familiar with, as my house is next door to those wetlands. And those wetlands have been, have been thriving in the recent years with more and more water and whatnot. So, that store is not, you know, replicative of, you know, what used to be there. It's going to be quite a bit bigger. And I don't really think we need another gas station. There's one right next door. At any rate, I heard two-year storm, I mean, 100-year storms happen every 10 years now. So, a two-year storm's going to happen, what, every two or three months? I'm not sure what timeframe we're using for a two-year storm with global warming and whatnot. It's 2023, it's a lot different than 2002 in terms of rainfall and whatnot. Which brings me to another point. You've got a hill coming down on Route 1. And when it rains and when it pours, that turns into a river of rain. And it goes down, it comes over my property on the corner, and then runs over that entire gas station. So, I'm not sure how you're going to be able to contain that much water without it overflowing and spilling in, into the wetlands, just because I've seen how much water comes, comes down that hill. And then I heard there was, you know, some questions as to, you know, does the water run east to west or west to east? It runs east to west when it's coming down the hill, but you get storms where it comes from the west and it pushes the water down the street, and it floods there in front of that gas station, or the proposed gas station. There's wetlands across the street, you can see it. There's wetlands behind the gas station. So, I'm concerned about stormwater runoff, wetlands, and pollution in that area. The other thing I'd like to mention is the traffic issue that was brought up a couple times. I think it's unrealistic to expect people to enter from the right, take a right-hand turn. I mean, I just don't, I just don't see it happening. Traffic issues, especially during the summer, you get, you got a traffic light right there across from the, where the Rite Aid is and the gym and the package store, there's a traffic light there. And in the summer, probably three months out of the year, on days, I mean, that backs up, it's going to back up past this proposed convenience store gas station. I mean, it goes way back. So, it's, traffic is going to be an issue there. You got a proposed sidewalk coming in here. You're going to have a lot more pedestrians. You're going to have a traffic issue. People are going to take a left out of that gas station. So, that's concerning as well. And I think that I pretty much touched on about everything I wanted to. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. John Chase.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commission members. My name is John Chase. I represent a neighboring property owner, Alden Associates. And I would, I'll indulge the following comment just to make sure the record is clear as to the spelling of my name. It's C-H-A-S-E. Whenever I appear with Brother Counsel, Mr. Casey, we always seem to be wearing the same uniform and so on. So, that, in any case, it's C-H-A-S-E. I, we've heard quite a lot of information, some questions and discussion of new information that's going to be coming in. And so, while I certainly came prepared tonight, the likelihood of new information presented makes me concerned for a comprehensive presentation in support of my client's perspective. And so, I just wanted to make sure that in discussion of a continuance, per Attorney Casey's request, and also as discussed much earlier by the commission itself, that the continuance will be such that the public hearing is being held open for all purposes, not just for the presentation of further information.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me. Would you like a rebuttal?
Again, for the record, John Casey from Robinson &amp; Cole. I guess I want to clear up one thing. We're not expecting, we're not planning on a big change to these plans. Our last submission was inside the 15 days because that's when we got the town engineers' comments, and that's as soon as we could turn them around and get them back to the staff. So, our submission is pretty much final. And as of now, I haven't heard anything, and I think Kyle can speak for himself, that suggests we need to, if there's anything substantive on the plan that we're going to change. I mean, the, you know, the nuts and bolts of this plan, where the catch basins are, where the wells are, you know, that's all been taken care of. We're not, you know, we're not planning to add a story to the building or make it bigger, smaller, remove. So, the plan is the plan. Really, I think this is more procedural in terms of anything else. So, you know, I guess I would say, you know, it's probably more convenient if someone has something to say about this plan, they should say it tonight rather than kind of waiting a month and then, you know, "John, if you're ready to go," and then have all this, you know, that would then be new information.
We're just going by the book.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay. As to the other comments, I guess I'd ask Kyle, I'm not the engineer, so I think some of those were related to drainage, the stormwater calculations. And a lot of this, I think, is just to clarify the record. As this commission knows, you know, any site development, you're not responsible for fixing all the problems around that site. So, if it's already a busy road, it's already a busy road. The question is, is your use going to make it sufficiently worse? You know, is it going to be so bad that we can't even allow your new use to come in here? And so, the traffic report, you have that, an expert traffic engineer saying, "No, this is not going to add to any of the traffic problems on Route 1." I'm going to let Kyle speak to the right-hand in, right-hand out turn. I mean, that was, as he said, placed upon us first by the Board of Police Commissioners, which we think is a reasonable thing, and then by DOT. Because otherwise, somehow, we'd have to tear up the road to make it wider to allow the left-hand turn. As to whether signs, people pay attention to signs, you know, unfortunately, they don't pay attention to all the signs. But all we can do is plan the site to the best of our ability. You know, I'm sure people speed down that road. There's probably lots of signs that say 25 or 35 miles an hour. We can't help it if someone doesn't follow traffic signals. We, you know, all we can do is-
We, you know, all we can do is plan and, and make it very clear to the customers that they, there's a certain traffic pattern, and we expect them to, to follow it. As to tanker trucks, I think that one's even easier because they're going to be delivering to our client's business, and they can just be told, you have to come in from the right. You can't come in and take a left. And they're just going to have to learn that pattern. I think that's probably the easiest one to, you know, to make sure people follow that rule. All right. With that, I think now I will ask Kyle, there's some questions about drainage, and he's the appropriate person to talk about that.
Again, Kyle Hubbard from CLA Engineers. I can address a couple of the comments that were brought up. One thing regarding the abutters and the listing on the map, Sheet 2 does have the direct abutters listed on, on the map. We did not list the properties across the street on the map, but we do have the direct abutters listed on there. Also regarding the drainage, Route 1 is crowned and, and has a gutter line running in, in front of this property. So, no, none of the, the stormwater from this site will contribute to, or provide negative impact to the, to the abutting, to the property owner to the north of, on the opposite side of the road. And as far as the drainage goes, the, the town engineer has reviewed the drainage and the report. DOT has also reviewed the, the drainage and, and the drainage and, you know, and their gutter line and in their right-of-way, and have not had any issue with, with the report and, and any concern that this development will have a negative impact on any of the stormwater out there.
I have one quest- question. This is your nightscape, it's very admirable.
I'm, I'm sorry?
Is this your nightscape? Did you have-
We, we did not do that, no. The architect did, did that, yeah.
Well, thank you.
I wish I could take credit because they do come out nice.
Well, I found, it did, it did. However, it does show the canopy and the sign out front not being lit. Is that correct, Attorney Chase?
That, that is correct. The canopy will have downlighting directly over the fuel, but it won't have a perimeter or any uplighting.
And neither the street sign?
Not that we have proposed at this point, no.
Well, then the other thing is, you can tell your architect needs to learn how to count streetlights. He only included three when there's five. He included two when there's five on your plan.
That might have been from a previous iteration of, of the plan, so I, I will certainly let him know.
I don't, but, but it is, but those five streetlights or downlights, pole lights, I guess they're called-
Yeah.
-are included in your photometric.
They, they are included in the photometrics and on our site plan, yes, yeah.
And then, just for historical amusement, in your presentation, your documentation you handed us, Attorney, from 1963, and I remember this last year when I went through this, on page nine of the Town of Stonington Zoning Board of Appeals Town Hall, December 30th, 1963, Member Fairbrother says, "Thank you, but there is a question. There is some conversation in town suggesting the fact that the town built a sidewalk from the high school right through here." Some things take 60 years, I guess, in this town. Are there any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? This is Chance.
Do I hear a motion to continue this?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to-
For September 5th?
Yep. Make a motion to continue this hearing until the next meeting, September 5th.
Sorry.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Chuck. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Ryan. Your second.
Second.
Thank you, Lynn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.